The March 3, 2022, meeting of the Corvallis School Board is called to order at 6:31 PM. Oregon law, oh, sorry, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oregon Public Law allows public meetings to be held entirely online. In the interest of public health and safety for all community members, especially for immunocompromised individuals and their families, the Corvallis School Board will continue to hold its meetings online. Public comment is available at some of our meetings. Information about how to provide public comment is available on the Corvallis School District website. Additionally, the board's agenda and packet, as well as the link to the district YouTube channel, are available on the school board page on the district website. Public meetings are live streamed on the district's YouTube channel, and a recording is posted to the same channel typically the day after the meeting. I am grateful that this technology makes it possible for more community members to view and/or participate in school board meetings, given the flexibility provided by Oregon Law. Tonight, I am in attendance in person, and Director Adams, Jones, Audrava, White Bear, and Tomney are available via audio or audio video. Due to technology and connectivity limitations, some virtual participants attending may have their video off some or at all times. Director Baker is excused tonight. We'll start with board member reports. Does anyone have anything they would like to share? Well, I do. Oh, Dr. White Bear.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I was able to attend a safe meeting, actually, yesterday, with all the groups together, and it was, I'm really glad that that meeting was able to happen, and I look forward to future engagement opportunities with students as well. And there was a lot that I took away from those conversations, and I'm excited to be able to apply it to our board work immediately.
Director Tomney.
I was going to share from the same meeting, being able to go and hear from and speak with the safe group across the middle schools and high school yesterday, and to meet Taylor and others in person for the first time, which was really wonderful. Students came with questions. They had questions. They are looking for accountability. They are looking to see themselves reflected in the decisions that are being made across the district, and they have so much to share and so much to say, and I was really grateful to be in that space. And I'm also looking forward to thinking about, thinking really deeply, how do we make sure that we are living the board goals and that that's happening across the district, and that students see their voices represented throughout? So I'm looking forward to listening more to those student voices, because they really, they're incredible, and they have a lot to share and a lot to say. So, thanks, everybody.
Director Alderweil.
Just want to echo the same sentiment. It was really great to see the students share their passion, their concerns, and the need for change. I'm proud of our staff, our district, and our students who are determined to enact change. The questions were difficult. They were on topic of things that the legislator is thinking of, the board is thinking of, and national interests, but also the elevated concerns that I haven't heard of before. And I'm very grateful for the student voice being front and center in this process, and really grateful for sharing the space with Shauna and Lou, listening to the students. Much appreciation for staff for coordinating and leading this effort.
Thank you to all three of you for tuning up and lifting up student voice. Is there anyone else who has something to share? Well, I attended the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation meeting this month. One of the things they've done is approved funding for summer schools, but they also recognize that the state may provide money for summer schools this year. So there, we may not need the money from them, but continues to be the case that they've been giving the district that support makes planning for and organizing summer programs a lot easier for our district, so that is much appreciated. And they had a very successful hand across Corvallis, which is just a huge expression of the support from the community for their efforts in supporting our schools and our students. And they heard from Sarah Devine, who we heard from last week also, about the services offered, and much of the work that's done at our Welcome Center is because of funding from the Corvallis Schools Foundation. So it was good for her to have a chance to talk to them, and much of what they talked about was very similar to what we heard in our meeting last week. I also went to the OSBA regional listening session last night. Was it a good meeting? One of the things discussed was the possibility of formation of a rural caucus. I shared how key good board training and good board relationships and a good relationship, and a trusting relationship for their superintendent has been through the pandemic and how helpful it's been navigating all the changes and stress of the last couple of years. And so it was appropriate that tonight is the night when we are going to get more training. So that's all from me. Last chance, anyone else? No, so then we will move on to our next item, which is the superintendent's report.
All right, well, thank you. So tonight, rather than, as I've done with the traditional superintendent's report, has been several topics that I've covered, updates around what's happening in our schools. Because we don't have a space tonight for an education update, I thought it would be appropriate to do an update on the announcement that was made earlier today about the changing requirements around masking, and also some of the other changes that come from the regular, the Great School Safe Learners Guidance. And so Melissa and I will be co-presenting on this topic, and we have space and time for questions at the end. So I think I want you to sort of shift the way you think about our Suits Report and how it typically is, and tonight think about this as more of an educational update. And so we'll need a little bit more time to present. So with that, we're going to go ahead and provide some information for you that we learned yesterday and have communicated out to our staffs and our families and the community this afternoon. So again, as you know, the Health Authority announced rules. I need to move all of your photos so I can see the slide. You know how that happens sometimes. So announced rules requiring masks in public places, including schools, be lifted on, basically on March 12th is when that will go into effect. And so one of the things that I think is important to note is that I'm following the Omicron surge, and for the first time in the pandemic, Oregon has a very high level of vaccine and infection-induced immunity. And so the context here is that we have, as a community, higher immunity than we've had throughout the pandemic. And that is why these rules are changing for us in Oregon. There's an anticipation that that immunity will stay in place for 90 days or around 90 days, which takes us to the end of the school year. And so that was the thinking behind these changes now. As you know, we have seen changes happen throughout the pandemic and new rules and requirements and new expectations. I think that this is the, this is the new set of organizational rules and expectations, but those things continue to change as we've moved through the pandemic. So while I'm providing an update tonight alongside Melissa, this will be our last update as we continue to evolve and change based on context. And I think that's an important thing to note, because again, I think we have, throughout the pandemic, have felt that we're at a new stage, maybe we're beyond it, the pandemic isn't over. And so I think it's important that we continue to recognize that there will be continued changes, continued guidance that is modified, and we'll continue to bring that to you and make new decisions for our schools based on the information that we have available at the time and the science that we have that allows us to have supportive decisions by OHA and the Department of Education. So again, beginning March 12th, masks will no longer be required. At the same time, one of the things that I think is really important that we keep at the center of this discussion is that individual choice matters. We also recognize that as a community, masks have sometimes been, become more than just a a way of protecting ourselves. It's become political. And I want us to recognize that students, families are going to continue to make choices that address this, what they feel is the safest option for them. And we need to have grace and recognize that we all have different contexts, different scenarios, and we need to make sure that we're being care, showing care and respect for one another. And I think that that's going to be an important piece as we make this transition. While it's been important in each transition we've made, this one, I think it's uniquely important because there will be variability.
The way that we organized this slideshow and our communication to family and the staff was around the layered prevention strategies that we put into place when we started the school year. So if we go back to the beginning, vaccination is the best way to prevent the spread of COVID, and the vaccination requirements remain exactly the same as they were before. The vaccination requirement is an OAR, so there's been no shift, no change there. And you can read on the slide, things are status quo with that.
Again, so masks will still be required through March 11th, so through next week of school, that will still be a requirement. While it will no longer become a requirement after that in our schools and on our buses, again, we want to support individual choice in this matter, and again, care for one another.
Physical distancing is now just a recommendation, and our goal is to ensure that our kids are three feet apart to the extent possible. The physical distancing rule is impacted by another guidance shift that we're going to see in a slide or two with regard to isolation and quarantine. So what we're going to see in our buildings, our students are able to get closer to each other. They'll be able to eat inside if that's a choice. And we're not going to be as concerned about measuring the distance between the center of one seat to the center of another seat to ensure they're three feet apart. So we're going to see something a little bit closer to normal when it comes to what a classroom spacing looks like. We are encouraging student or encouraging staff to maintain distance from students at six feet, but again, to the extent possible. And again, physical distancing is impacted by the change to isolation and quarantine.
Throughout the pandemic, family members have been accustomed to the Crisis Go app and putting in addressing symptoms on a daily basis. We're going to step back away from that. At the same time, one of the things that will continue to be in place is that, as with any sort of outbreak, think about norovirus or other situations, we want to make sure that if someone has a primary symptom, that they're staying home. And also, if a secondary symptom persists for more than one day, again, getting into see your doctor, and we will also continue to have testing made available, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a couple of slides.
We'll continue to ask you to stay home when you're sick, but we're going to take a step back and look at what we traditionally used as when I should keep my kid home. And that's a form that we have available on our website and was attached to the announcement for parents today. There are primary symptoms that should keep you home, and that was, those are listed here. And then there are non-primary symptoms that will probably want to keep you home, especially if you have vomiting or something like that. But they're not symptoms that are, that, those symptoms can be, when, once they've mitigated within like 24 to 48 hours, you can come back to school or to work for our staff. I think the other important part here is for a while now, we've been requiring a negative COVID test in order to get back to school or work when any symptom is present, and that is no longer a requirement.
And again, this slide just highlights some of the secondary symptoms. And that, again, in some cases, those are symptoms that you're going to have for 24 to 48 hours. But if those persist, then again, those top section would be something you'd want to reach out to your physician.
So the isolation and quarantine is the other place where we see a really big shift in guidance. And a lot of this, if you read in the RSSL Resiliency Framework, this is backed up by the CDC, so Oregon Health Authority is following along with CDC guidance when it comes to isolation and quarantine. Isolation is the same. If you are positive for COVID, do not come to work and do not come to school. We're asking that you continue to notify the school when your child, for example, is home positive with COVID, so that a nurse can get in touch with you and give you a specific date when you can return to school. The quarantine is the big change here in that we will pause on quarantining students or staff who are exposed to a positive COVID-19 individual. That pause is, again, borne out in the information from the CDC. And the idea that by the time we contact trace, find out who it is that was around a positive student, get in touch with that family, that five days have passed, the students are already back in school, and the families miss that opportunity to test. So we will continue to notify families in classrooms and in buildings possibly that we have a positive individual in the building, but we are no longer going to be doing that very deep, universal investigation on COVID-positive cases.
So we still have a strong supply of binax now rapid tests that we can provide and continue to use. And in terms of an exposure, those of you that have signed up to have those weekly tests, those will continue as well. So we continue to have this as another layer of mitigation.
So one of the things that we had prior to this was called Test to Stay. If a student or staff member was exposed at school, they could test on a certain regimen and be able to stay in school. Well, now you don't have to quarantine if you are exposed to a positive individual. So instead of doing Test to Stay, we can offer you the binax test, and we can also send home with you a two-pack of at-home tests. We received cases of them over the last couple of days that will be going out to our schools to give to our families who need at-home test kits for COVID. So that's going to be part of the process that we're going to use to help families and keep that under control in their own homes.
Yeah, we, I think we received close to 20 cases in the last two days, so we have, we have a strong supply. Again, those other mitigation factors will continue to be in place. So cleaning and disinfecting, our custodial staff have done a tremendous job through the pandemic, and we'll continue to do, go above and beyond in our schools and in our settings. A couple of other mitigation measures are in the next slide. Ventilation will continue to utilize the, those pieces that we had throughout the pandemic again, pulling in air from the outside, continuing to use air filtration, and all those other aspects that have been important over the last two years.
Next slide. And of course, hand washing, which is important in any school at any time, but even, even more so now.
All right, so we're happy to open it up for questions related to these, the most recent changes. And again, I just really want to highlight that this is, these changes we see as positive changes, and at the same time, we recognize that they will be future changes as well, and we'll continue to provide you updates as we move forward.
Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, thanks for the report, and I saw the communication go out to families, so thanks for the communication. You know, the CDC released their levels by, by community, the red, yellow, and green levels based on the three factors, and I don't need to go into the details. So currently Benton County is in the red zone, and they're recommending that we should retain our masks. Now, you're, you're, I'm assuming that, well, I'm just curious, what, what evidence do you have that supports this decision? Because currently, you know, what, you know, what I'm seeing and what some other parents have interacted with me are seeing is that, you know, we're in the red zone. Should we be taking off masks or planning to take off masks? And shouldn't we wait until we're in the yellow zone where CDC is saying they recommend where masks are optional? Why are we going optional, or why are we anticipating that? So I guess, what, are you anticipating that we're going to satisfy that gating criteria? I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to answer that one. I think two things are important to note. One is that that information gets updated once per week. And so it hasn't been updated since, I think, February 25th was the last update. And so we'll expect another update tomorrow. So I'm anticipating that as case numbers have gone down, we will be moving, I'm hoping that we move into the yellow as of tomorrow. I also know that through conversations with Samaritan, as a regional hospital, there's also another consideration that they're having patients from across the region at the hospital, not just folks in Benton County. And that also has an impact on that, on where we are as a county. So that's another factor that's beyond our control, which has been sort of the case in a number of ways. Thinking earlier on about the university and some of the impact of students returning, this is another example of, well, OHS did a great job in that case. This is another example of a spot where, as a regional medical center, that influences and impacts where we, where we fall.
Okay, so you, the expectation is that we're going to be both in that optional threat, you know, below that optional threshold or in that zone, at least by the 14th, when, when we're bringing kids and, and.
I'm hopeful that we see that change tomorrow.
Actually, I just pulled it up.
We're in it now. Oh, sorry, Sarah.
Oh, great.
Oh, good.
They updated it.
Then my, the question is moved. Thank you.
It must have updated within the last hour.
I checked it earlier today too, and it's updated now, and it's for medium.
I, I have an, I have a, a thing to tell me every time it updates, and so it sends me a notice, and so it updated about 35 minutes ago with, with that update for today. We are in the yellow, we are barely in the yellow though. I do want to like, just make clear that like, there's the yellow, and then there's like us, and we're like barely not having a toe over the line. So I'm a little nervous about spring break and whether we're going to be able to stay in the yellow after spring break, and I'm not going to jump the line of other people who have questions, but you probably anticipate mine.
Um, Lou.
I was fine with Therese just asking. Sounds like I have another question, and if it's on the same path, Therese, go ahead.
Well, thanks. My question is just how, how prepared is the district to, to respond if we come back from spring break and we are no longer in the yellow?
We are continuing to monitor daily. We are still communicating daily number of cases per school. We are paying close attention to that. We continue to have frequent conversation with the, our local health authority. I feel like we are in a situation where we will continue to monitor changes, and we'll make decisions based on the changes that we see. As you know, I think this is a great example. I've been watching the CDC members closely, and I know that they change within the last hour. That's the level of attention we're paying to this. So I think that what I would hope people would understand is that each, each decision that we've made, we have made with a lot of thought and intention. And we've also tried to make sure that two things go true. One, that we're able to keep students in school and keep our schools open. That's something that we pay close attention to throughout, and also that we continue to adjust. And I think that that's one of the pieces that's important to keep in mind, that, as I said, from the, from the outset, adjustments will still happen. We are still in a pandemic, and we're at a point right now where, based on vaccination rates, as well as the most recent surge, we are in a better spot than we've been in a while. And so it's, it's time to make a shift. However, I know this will not be the last shift that we make.
And just to talk about it technically as well, I, first of all, I have been given the opportunity to appreciate our nursing department as they've worked through this year, adjusting to every one of these shifts and changes. And I want to especially call out Leam Henriquez, who has worked tirelessly out of the office. But most importantly, we've, if we live through January, I think we can adjust and live through a lot. So I have great faith in our ability to make those shifts and changes as things get better or get worse.
All right, Lou.
I have a couple questions. One's a yes or no, so can I ask a couple, since this is one short, okay. Will students be sent home if they have primary symptoms that you mentioned, or will they at least be rapid tested?
They will be rapid tested, but if they have those symptoms, they need to go home.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the other ones are kind of both around, like, the perception and also like preventative. So, but one is a question that has come up, is why is the iPass stuff ending? And then the other one has to do with how students are being prepared to see in peers without masks if there's any prep happening in school with that. So those two are the, like, question, questions I had too.
So we're, we're no longer contact tracing. So our iPass system was a screener and a contact tracer. And our participation in iPass among families was, has been declining quite a bit over the last few months. I think that there is a, people are getting tired of using it. I think that they're tired of having to answer those questions every day. The one thing that we were using it for, there, and it was very efficient in its use, was making sure to notify our school administrators about which students or staff shouldn't be in the building because they're on quarantine. With our numbers dropping as dramatically as they are, we have other systems that we can use to make that happen, and we'd like to rely on those.
With regards to the second question, we met with our principals this morning to provide them a preview of the messages that were going to go out today. And we started with this, the same topic about how do we make sure that we are setting students up to show each other grace and kindness, and what are some of those steps that we're going to take at schools over the next week to make that happen? So at this point, point in time, I've left it to our principals as the expectation. We'll be checking in and monitoring throughout next week to see how that's going. But again, that's one of the, one of our greatest priorities right now.
Okay, thanks for answering both of those. One was a concern, and one I noticed, like, having a smaller, especially a younger kid, seeing people without masks for the first time was a little bit unnerving. And so especially when they're used to, like, it being so reinforced in school, so that would be, thank you.
And I'm anticipating that there will be people that continue to choose to wear masks. I don't think that, that it will, and I think that that's the, the challenge in it, is that there will be some people that do and some people that don't. And so again, recognizing that it's an individual decision for each of us and based on the context. And I think that's, I really want us to, as a community, to keep that in mind.
Shauna.
I just have a couple quick ones. On the slide about testing, Ryan, I think you said this verbally, but I just want to double check because I didn't quite hear it just through Zoom. The daily or the weekly voluntary testing program will still be in place with Lab Dash?
Yes, that will continue for both staff and for students.
Great. And then in terms of my, one of my other questions was just around Crisis Go, and what data was that providing, and would we be missing out on now? And would we be missing out on now? But you've explained that. So thank you. And then my other question was just, I'm curious, especially since we just had the honor of having three student representatives here with us tonight. If students have concerns that maybe we haven't talked about, haven't addressed, or. Relief or excitement, maybe in the other direction. That they might feel comfortable sharing with us. So we're thinking through all the different pieces that for those of us who aren't in school buildings every day. Can actually hear from those who are. And then the same question in terms of if you've heard anything from staff in terms of some of their. Worries or lingering concerns, maybe that we haven't addressed or brought up today.
So I know I see that Calvin has his hand up, so I'm sure he'll have a perspective to share with us. With regards to staff, I would say that staff continue to be across the continuum. Of both concern and relief. I would say that the majority is moving towards that phase of relief. At the same time, there are still folks who have concerns. And we recognize that and we also know that we will have some have some individual conversations with staff. About those concerns and ways that we can continue to work to mitigate them.
Calvin.
Um, I kind of have. Two, maybe three-ish questions. One of them is just for my note taking for like court counsel, just so. I can like report back then we can know who to discuss this with. If they have more questions, I'm not bringing up today. Actually, like in charge of making this decision.
So you could. So Calvin, you could reach out to either Melissa, Harter or me. Either one of us would be happy to answer questions.
Okay, the second one was, will there still be masks provided at schools for students who choose to have one? But do not currently have access to get one?
They will.
We have so many masks to offer.
And then the third one. I guess it's not really so much of a question, but answering Shauna's question of. How do students feel? I think there is certainly a percentage of the student body that. Is moving towards the relief section at CV. I also think that there is. Chunks of the student body that. Do not think this is the right decision at all, that they think we should continue to be wearing masks for at least the end of the school year. And I think there's a middle ground section that maybe is a bit concerned that. This will sort of be a repeat of last year where we had masks off for like a week and then it went straight back on. And so it's kind of just, there's certainly the two polar ends of relief and concern. And I think in the middle, there's a bit of concerns about. Student safety and. How we're going to continue to manage it and. I also know that there is. People who are thinking that. Perhaps it's a bit too soon, like they wouldn't be opposed to it, but I think it's maybe like a bit too soon. Like end of March as originally being scheduled.
Yeah, I can hear that and I. Was somewhat surprised when it moved up to the twelfth from the nineteenth. And I thought a lot about that and whether what the what the impact of that would be. And recognizing that as the as the majority of the state is in this direction, another another week would be. I could I can and and each one of these decisions, to be quite honest, I could see both sides. And I can see a benefit in waiting and I could see a benefit of going now. So I I hear that Calvin.
Um, do any of our other student representatives wanna share their thoughts or you can Taylor?
Yeah, I would say like it's pretty similar at CHS. There are some students who are like very ready to think that this is. A great opportunity to start like de-masking and then there's other students who aren't comfortable with that. I think that the main concern would be. Students being either like made fun of or like kind of targeted because of their personal choice, whether it's to choose to choice to wear a mask or choice not to wear a mask. And so that's one of the things we've been talking about in our leadership classes is like. If this is like, since this is the decision, like, how do we help students? Like on both sides of that equation, like kind of respect people's like individual choices in that matter. So. Cause there are people who feel very strongly that we shouldn't be wearing masks and there's are people who feel really strongly that we should continue to wear masks. So kind of. Trying to figure out a way to kind of make sure that all the students feel like they. Aren't being attacked for the choice that they choose to make in response to the decision.
Thank you. Charlotte, do you have anything to add? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was also agreeing a lot with what Taylor said and just. We have people all over the spectrum and we just have to. Make sure that they're all students are being supported. So whether that be communicating with staff and making sure we're just extra vigilant. On kind of being aware of what's going on with the students and stepping in and interfering when. Targeting or attacking happens to students and their choices.
Thank you. Um, Ben.
So I'm just really impressed with this conversation and and the district's ability to, as we go into this next stage in the pandemic. That you've been really mindful about, you know, ensuring that that staff and students are supported and that we're we're doing this in a very careful way. Can you talk a little bit more about where those goalposts are? You talked about, you know, transitioning back and forth. We know that we're probably there will be yet another turn in this pandemic. And so as we ride the waves that are coming. Can you talk about how you're gonna be making those decisions on, you know, changing those protective measures? As as we, you know, go along?
So. I think that for me throughout this pandemic, it has been leaning on the medical community. The CDC, the OHA guidance from ODE. I feel that Colt Gill has been a strong. Presence in these conversations and has a background as an educator. So as the person in charge at ODE and helping to make these decisions. So I will continue to rely on those that have this expertise. And same thing at the county level with our county health department. So while my my primary education is around being an educator. Not as an epidemiologist, I will continue to look to those folks who have that understanding that I that I don't. I will, but I also have an experience as a as an educator, an educator, educational leader and someone who knows a lot about schools. And so trying to bridge those two pieces is what I'll continue to work to do.
For that detail, really appreciate it. And thank you for struggling with this. I know that. There is a lot of detail in the guidance and that the information has been flowing very fast. And so. I just appreciate you and the team sifting through that and. Agonizing over the details and trying to focus on keeping our kids and staff safe while trying to keep, you know. Keep them in buildings. So thanks a lot for that hard work.
Yeah, and I also know that there was. Community members that were waiting for an announcement and what hoping that one would come earlier. And I've been waiting for the guidance to come from the help from ODE that came yesterday. Before we before I felt I could make an informed decision. Because again, if those other components didn't change, in what ways was that going to? Would that impact our students' ability to be in classrooms? And I didn't want to make a decision until I better understood that. So for community members who may be listening who wanted this information last week. I really didn't feel like I could provide it until I had the the full picture.
Thanks for that. Really do appreciate it.
So I have a question. I think the the. Piece of this that. You know, like many things during this pandemic, a piece of this that's. Keeping me up at night is. The kids who either they have. Something that makes them especially high risk or they live with someone who is especially high risk. And have they've felt okay being in school with everyone masked. And now all of a sudden, school feels not safe for them. What are we doing to support those both those students and and this and the staff who may be in that position?
So as I alluded to earlier with staff, there will need to be some individual conversations. With students, one of the things we know is that in some of our classrooms and in some of our spaces. Where we do have some students that may be vulnerable, we're all strongly recommending masking continues in those spaces. We're also recognizing that this is a change. And so with Cravallis online, one of the things we've tried to do this year is only have two students move at the. Beginning of the year, the semester or the the end of the year for the following year. We're encouraging that conversations happen between that principal at that school. And the principal of Cravallis Online, if we needed to make any changes right now. We would allow that to that conversation to happen. So those are the pieces that are. Ongoing and conversations that we're we're having right now.
Thank you for. Struggling through this and and making yet another plan. Um, Teresa, you have another question?
Yeah, question and I guess observation. So you know, over these months, we've heard years now, I guess we can't say months anymore. We've heard a lot of perspectives from the community. We've heard from our students, we've heard from our staff. And some of those perspectives from staff have. Reflected. Gratitude for the rigorous response around masking and efforts to distance and. Some of the staff that have reached out to us have also shared about their own concerns around being medically fragile. Dealing with parents who are upset with mask mandates. And so in that context, with that is kind of the backdrop, I guess my question is. What what are we offering to support those? Staff members who may feel that they they still need to come to work masked. Who may be met with resistance from. Parents who are. Who think that this practice should be done now and who are. Potentially upset about conflicting messaging between the teacher who wants to be masked or needs to be masked. And the lack of a mask mandate. Where the children in the class and maybe now be having this message as masks are optional. So this teacher is continuing to mask. I'm seeing the potential of tension and the potential of teachers to maybe not feel supported entirely. Not by the district. I'm not suggesting the district doesn't support them, but that in this very, very hot button topic. Where not everybody has always been very. Polite or professional in their communication around this, we may have some teachers that feel vulnerable. And I just wanna know what's our what's been the messaging to those teachers about support? And I will speak, I guess I'll ask candidly to what's the message to the parents about? The need for the parents to behave maybe a little better than some of them have so far on this topic. When it comes to communicating with the district and with the teachers.
So what I'd say is that I've I've been proud of our community as a whole. A lot of the narrative you see around this topic is narrative that you have seen outside of our community. So first and foremost, I believe that we can have high expectations for everyone. On on this topic. I also know that we need to make sure that our schools are safe places for our kids to learn. And those sorts of interactions don't help with that. And so we would work to limit that. In a number of different ways. But first and foremost, I feel really optimistic specifically around our community. And our ability to show care for one another. And I and I would expect that that continued to be the case. However, if that's not the case, we would. We would do our best to work through that with the person so that it doesn't become an impact on our staff and on our students. Cause at the end of the day, we we know that when kids feel safe. Secure in the classroom with their with their teacher, that that's when learning happens. It doesn't happen in stressful environments and we need to make sure we do our part to make sure that kids feel safe in our schools.
Charlotte.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if this is a question that can be answered right now, but I just thought it was an interesting thought that I just wanted to. Make sure was addressed. So I just wanted to know, have you taken into consideration the disparity in vaccination rates in ethnic groups? Because you know, it's a known fact that our students of color have less vaccination rates. Due to due to various situations, but I just wanted to know if that was taken into consideration when considering. The new COVID protocol that's gonna be put in.
Yeah, that's a great question. So one of the things we're gonna continue to do, Charlotte, is continue to work with our health authority. We meet with them consistently. We look at our vaccination rates. We look we look at it. By demographic and then we decide where we're going to hold vaccination clinics. We talk with staff members about reaching out to our primarily through our health navigators. And through our our staff at our schools to encourage people to come and and receive a vaccination. So that work's gonna continue. We've continued to hold those and have had a good solid turnout. And we are gonna continue that partnership with the county. And the school district to make sure those events continue to happen. And they're primarily happening at our schools. But they're happening at schools nearest to where we see lower rates of vaccination. And so we're gonna continue that.
Okay, well, thank you for this presentation and this information and for. All of the work over the last two years of taking the information that's coming to us and making decisions for our school. I, you know, a lot of kids behavior, they. That according to what they're seeing adults do. So we're asked that our community behave in a way that. Allows. The adults to give each other grace and the students to give each other grace because even if you're someone who doesn't looking forward to taking off your mask, this is a change. After two years of lots of change and it's it's gonna be different and. I think I'll be a little surprised to have different feelings. So let's be kind to each other as we do this. Um, so the next item on our agenda is our student representative reports. So why don't we start? With Taylor.
Okay, so I just wanted to start by saying a huge thank you to Sammy and Shauna and Lou for coming to the safe meeting. It was a really. Great experience and we heard from the students that it was nice to finally like see some faces in real life and put like a face of the names on the school board. Cause I know some students were like, I don't even know like who's on the school board. So it was really nice to kind of. Have you guys come visit and talk to us and connect that way. And so it was a pretty positive experience that way. So thank you for that. Um, we recently had our winter formal dance, which is like our winter in Hollywood theme and it was. It was a really great opportunity to reconnect as a school community and I think that it. Students had a pretty positive experience. And we also had our unified basketball assembly. We have our life skills, kids come and play basketball. And we were able to have some students come into the gym and cheer them on and it was a really like probably the best assembly we've had all year. Really good school spirit there and it was just really nice to finally have some like a normal activity that everyone usually enjoys. Going on. So it just felt it was a really good feeling. It felt kind of back to normal. So we really we love that about every year. And then also an update on our gender neutral bathrooms. Um, we've secured one bathroom in the H building for our students there and. We are ordering signage right now and making like the necessary improvements. So like putting in a hygiene. Box and just other improvements to make it so it's inclusive for all students. And so we're super excited about that. We've been pushing for that for a couple of months. So glad to see that there's progress going on with that. And then finally, our boys and our girls' basketball teams have playoff games this weekend and they're like getting ready to go to state. So that's super exciting and we're. Really happy for them. And yeah, I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
Anybody have a question for Taylor? Yeah, so let's hear from Crescent Valley. I don't know who wants to go first or how you're how you're doing this. So just jump in.
I could start us off. So this week has actually been a very busy week for CV. At lunch, um, this whole week, we've been holding our March Madness three V three basketball tournament for the student body. Um, we've had a lot of, um, turnout and a lot of excitement. So that's really fun. But also happening, um, during lunch at the tournament, there's a bake sale fundraiser going on for Jackson Street, the local youth center. Um, and then also happening, it's, um, not this week, next week, sorry. Um, there's our classified staff appreciation week where we, um, our leadership class is making sure that every day our classified staff are treated with various things, whether that be cards, chocolate or breakfast. Um, and then looking at the rest of this past month, we have, we had a great Valentine's Day week with our pride club handing out candy grams and our UNICEF club selling, uh, Valentine's cookies for fundraiser. Um, and then looking at the month to come, we have a blood drive coming up on the 17th and already have lots of signups rolling in. And then also a sophomore flag football class bonding event is in the works.
Okay. And looking at our athletic side of things, as Taylor mentioned, boys and girls basketball is also going to state for us. Um, we had, uh, girls swimming come second in state and boys swimming came first. Our wrestling team also won state. And winter sports are beginning to kick off. So kind of athletics are moving along smoothly. Clubs moving along smoothly, student activities moving along smoothly. And we anticipate a hopefully smooth transition to the not, some students not wearing masks as was just discussed.
Anyone have any questions for our CV students?
Yes. Good luck to Charlotte.
Yeah. Yeah. Congratulations. Um, and thank you. It is really good to hear about normal, as Taylor said, normal things going on. I think it makes us all feel good that that's happening in our school. So thank you for keeping us updated. So the next item on our agenda is public comment. Um, so it's my understanding that the, the members of community who are here for public comment have been provided with a guideline regarding public comment. As a reminder, community, community members get three minutes to make comments. They will be alerted when they have thirty seconds left. And then when their time is up, following comments, the board will have three minutes to ask clarifying questions. Before you start your comments, please state your name for the record and state whether you reside within the school district boundary. So I think the, we have comments from Lori. Are you, can you, are you on the line? Lori?
Hello. My name is Lori. And please note that there is a delay between what I'm hearing on my phone and what the listeners are hearing on Zoom. My name is Lori Marshall and I live in Corvallis. I have three children who attend Corvallis schools. I want to first acknowledge that Corvallis School District is going mask optional on March 12th. I appreciate the option for all. Next, I want you to know my lens when making my further comments. My first lens is that my dad was immun- immune compromised for five years and died in December. I acknowledge and I empathize with those who have lost loved ones for any reason. My second lens that I'm providing this comment tonight is from being a speech language pathologist in another school district. I know that my district, I know that in my district, children with a doctor's note can wear shields. However, there were a handful who got the note at one of my schools. And even with the note, we must acknowledge that those wearing shields were the ones who stood out compared to the other children. I have witnessed firsthand as a speech pathologist, the inequitable treatment children with disabilities have undergone when masks are required. It has long been known that children who are hard of hearing look at lips to facilitate understanding that was taken away from them. How is that equitable? We have known for decades that children who struggle to form sounds look at lips to facilitate learning sounds in how they speak. I have teachers tell me regularly, they cannot understand some of the children I work with. If the child is not understood by the teacher, the child may become frustrated and eventually stop trying to communicate. This breaks my heart. How is covering teachers and classmates faces equitable to children who struggle to learn to form their sounds correctly? We've also known for decades that children who have social communication disorders struggle to interpret facial cues and body language. They have been deprived of chances of practice by, of seeing faces this year. They have been deprived of practice interpreting facial expressions and cues. We also have known that children who do not have disabilities, but who are learning a new language or learning to read. Those children also look at lips to learn how to say new words, new sounds. We have been, we have not been treating children with social, who are learning a language. We have not been treating them in an equitable manner. I'm ashamed of my profession and how poorly and how inequitable we've been treating children with disabilities. Even though masks are now optional, masks must always remain optional and never be required again. And I look to Corvallis School District who has done so much to support equity, to continue to champion the equity rights of children with disabilities and children who are learning a new language and always stick with masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Lori? Not, there are no further questions or comments? Thank you. Sorry for comments this evening. Um, and with no further comments, the public hearing is now closed. So the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. Um, so this was done. Um, the school board has over the last couple of weeks worked on this together and, um, has put together a statement for the superintendent's evaluation. Um, I'm going to, in the interest of time, read the, the introduction to that document. The full document will be posted with the information, um, for this meeting. So the public, if you were interested in reading the, the full document, you may go to the, word website and follow the link to the information for tonight's meeting. So is the superintendent's evaluation. Dr. Ryan Nos is completing his sixth year as superintendent of the Corvallis School District. The COVID-19 pandemic continues to affect our community and our schools, but we were able to open schools in the spring and start on a regular schedule in September, keeping schools open to waves of virus variants. We've been able to keep students in classrooms with their teachers to do the important work of learning together. The district was able to celebrate the opening of new schools, build community partnership to support the health of our community, increase access to mental health providers in our schools, add staff to the classrooms for our younger students and expand equity lessons to reach all grades. There are many more accomplishments to celebrate, but there have also been challenges. Students returned to school with unfinished learning and unmet needs, demanding more from our staff than ever before. Through the uncertainty of the second year of a historic public health crisis, Superintendent Nos has led our district with tremendous thoughtfulness, care and attention to equity. He is a great thought partner and a leader for the district. He remains calm and steady in his commitment to the students we serve. The Corvallis School Board feels that our district is fortunate to have Superintendent Nos serving our students and staff and finds his performance to be outstanding. So thank you for all your work over these, this year and, and the other years of pandemic. And, um, when this document was put together, one of the things that I kept, one of the words that kept coming up was serve. Cause I really think you're a leader who leads as, as a servant to the people you work with. And, um, I think that's an important trait. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And I think, um, I just want to thank the board, um, for being great partners in this work, uh, throughout the pandemic. Um, knowing that you were also steady, um, in your decision-making, um, allowed me to be steady. Um, and not move too fast or move too slow, but to be thoughtful. Um, when I know that there's always the, the, the desire to know things quickly and to make quick decisions. Um, you haven't pushed it in that way. You've allowed us to do the, to make, I feel the right moves in the midst of a pandemic. And so, um, I also appreciate the partnership from all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is our training with the Oregon School Boards Association. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Kristen Miles, who will lead this section of the meeting.
Everybody. Nice to see you. Thanks for letting me listen to your meetings. I always love to just pop in and listen to what you're doing ahead of time. Um, great conversations as always. So, uh, so we are going to, as you probably saw on the, on the little agenda, um, one of the things that we'll just review, uh, and I don't intend to keep you here until like 10, by the way, I know that you've got other stuff going on. So my part won't go till 10. Um, but we're just reviewing the board goal categories. We've done this before. Just sort of ensuring that you've got, that, that we're all coalesced around those five categories. And then really looking at the essential question, you know, still, are these the right area of focus, which I feel like you've gotten pretty close to. We are at the, what we didn't accomplish last time, we're setting up for this time, which is what question should be asked of the community and then a timeline for the community survey. And those two things are what I hope that we can get accomplished tonight because then that piece goes into action. So, um, so the thing that I wanted, um, or that I was hoping everybody would be able to do, uh, prior to, um, this meeting was to get into Mural and, um, and, and put in some draft questions, uh, that were just brainstorming, like what questions should we ask the community? And I saw a couple of B pop in there earlier after I brought it up. Um, uh, so if, I don't know if you've got the link, I can always put it in the chat again. Let me put it in the chat. And, yeah. There's a link. So you should be able to get in there now. And what I'd like to do is for those of you that have already done this, that's great. Take a little break. Um, you don't, don't add more. Ben's don't add anymore. Your line is full. Um, but those of you that haven't had a chance, you know, if, if you don't want to fill out the whole thing or you can't fill out the whole thing, that's fine. I just put that number up there just in case you could. Um, but for those of you that, that want to work on this for a few minutes, I would just love to give you, you know, five minutes or so to be thinking. And then we're going to, like we've done before, we're going to group these because we're not going to ask the community every question here. We're going to ask them a few essential questions. And, but we want to get the themes that you've come up with. So, um, so go ahead. Remember we just click in once to any of your squares and start typing. I'm going to set a little timer for about five minutes. And if you get done before that, feel free to take a little break. And I'll see you back here. I'm just going to turn off my camera. So I'm not just staring at you and we'll see you back here in about five minutes.
All right, Kristen, did you say that we should, if we already put questions in, not to add more?
You, you can, if you, if you've got some more. I just told Ben's not to, cause he filled out in row.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Got it. Thanks.
But if you're, if you're done, like that, that's totally fine. And student reps, hopefully you know that you've got space up here too, to join in. I think I see Calvin and, but just know that your names are up here too. So please feel free to participate.
I've got Calvin and Charlotte. But Taylor, if you don't want to, you don't have to.
It is not mandatory. Got about a minute left. And Kimberly, do you mind while we're waiting for them to finish up? Just giving me screen sharing ability. Okay. Let's go ahead and wrap up. So we've got a lot of information here, which is great. We're going to try and condense it down a little bit. What I'm going to do is share this screen so that, um, also our, uh, public can see what you are working on. So it's going to be hard to see, but here we are. Um, I will zoom in on things as we go. So let's look first, what I would love for you to do instead of me reading everything out, I would love for you to read your own answers out. I think that's, that's more powerful than me doing it. So, um, so Lou, do you mind reading what you put down here for what we should ask the community?
Sure. Um, I put some initial ones down and put some more tonight. So I have, um, how can we help communicate the role of the board better? Um, what are your hopes for the future of Corvallis School District? What would you feel? What would you feel more connected to the district? And then I also put, what would help you feel more connected to the board? What do you think our biggest gap areas and needs are? And how can we work more with community partners?
Thank you. Vince, how about yours?
Yeah, these first three stem out of work that I did with the county. Oh, gosh, it was like 2016 when we did this. But it was a survey work that was tied to setting priorities for the county. And so, we posed these questions to residents in the counties, in the county. And so, I just retooled them for, for the district. And so, what do you value about Corvallis Schools? Trying to get at what, what's important to them? Where does education in Corvallis need to be in 50 years? So, getting them to look forward. And then, how do we get there? So, bringing them along as part of the solution. And then, the rest of these are just thoughts that came to me. How can schools better prepare children? Does school help create pathways to success for every child? Does school create opportunities for children? Are children safe in school? What is your greatest hope for your children in school? And what is your greatest concern for children in school?
Thank you. Sammy, do you mind reading yours?
Not at all. Excuse me. Considering the board's goals, how do you feel the district is doing? Oh, sorry, that's what Sarah. Is there, see, we shared the first letters. Is there a goal that you see missing from CSD goals? So, usually, when, when you have a list and you think it's, it's everything, this question really, make sure we see any blind spots. And I felt, or maybe I still feel that these are, capture everything, but maybe not. And I hope this, this question reveals that. If given a choice between CSD and another district, which one would you choose? And why would you make that choice? That would help us celebrate the good things that we have and maybe learn from other things that other districts are doing and we might not be hearing of. If the district is awarded more funds, where do you think these funds are needed most?
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I only have two that I wrote. Sammy, so you can't take them. Considering the board's goals, how do you think, how do you feel the district is doing and working towards reaching those goals? And what could the board do to better communicate the work being done to reach our goals?
Thank you. Therese?
Thanks. So, I put a lot of questions down. Should we, you want me to read them all? Can we just?
Yes, please.
Okay.
That's the price of putting a lot of questions down.
Oh, I know. I'm gonna remember that in the future, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna put fewer things down, so.
Okay, that backfired.
No, just kidding. I couldn't put fewer things down, even if I tried. So, my first question is, what do you experience as the greatest strengths of our district? And then, the flip side of that is, what, what is your area of greatest concern? What does equitable education mean to you? And could we have some examples provided? And that one is, I think, tied to wanting to understand how people conceptualize equity, since equity is such an important component of our, the board goals. I'd be, I think, valuable to see what people think that means. Which board goal do you think is most important? Which board goal do you think is the least necessary? So, what, what can we ditch? What new goals do you think are important for us to add or to consider? How do you feel the goal, the current goals represent your family's values or needs? What do you, who do you feel the goals do not represent in our, so who, who can't we find in the current board goals? And then, how can the board improve communication with the community about board goals?
Thank you. All right, let me zoom in on this again. Shauna?
All right. So, I think one of the things that I was thinking about as I was brainstorming questions is that I struggled a little bit with trying to come up with questions that would be relevant when I think about all of the different facets of our community. And I'm somebody who really likes to drill down in terms of, if I'm speaking with someone who serves in this role, or is an educator versus a parent, or both, or a parent with children with special needs, or representative of another community. And so, that was a little bit of attention I had, where I felt like I'm just asking some broad questions, trying to encompass everyone. So, the few that I added were, how can the Corvallis School District better engage the community? Including families, students, staff, and through community voice and perspective? How would you like to engage with the school district or school board? And again, looking at those broad communities, not just how can we, but how would you like to engage? How well do you think the district is living out each of the current goals? What could be improved? And what new district goals would you like to see?
Thank you. Okay, Ryan?
So, I moved a little ways from just, from the board goals to sort of more general statements that I think would help to give us insights into those goals, however. So, what are the current strengths of the school district? What, again, what are areas for growth or progress? What should we continue to do? What should we stop doing? And then, thinking out into the future, what, how, where would you like to see it in five years, and then also in 10 years? Vince went all the way up to 50, but I stayed a little bit closer to current. But I also like the idea of thinking that, thinking longer term.
Thank you. Calvin?
Yeah, okay. So, I kind of took some thoughts I liked from other people's questions I was seeing. And I changed them just a bit to questions I thought would be more applicable in my head. So, how can the current goals be changed to better suit the community? What are some new goals that you'd like to see our school district work towards? What are some strengths of the goals that we already have? What goals or sub-goals are being counterproductive or harmful to students? How can the school board better involve the community in the goal-making process? And how can we make school more enjoyable for the students that aren't necessarily excited to go to school each day?
Thank you. Melissa?
First of all, I really loved that last question, Calvin. So, thank you for that. The questions that I wrote, I just happened to have a meeting with Thought Exchange today, and we were talking about questions that people can make connections to. So, I was looking at it from that perspective. So, I asked, what can schools do better to connect, do to better connect with your family? What makes your child excited to go to school each day? And how has the district shown you that your perspective has been represented in decision-making?
Thank you. And Charlotte?
Yeah, so my questions were, how do you think the school district can improve? What do you want the school district to focus on, and what goals would you like to see? And then, how do you think the school district can improve community voice in decision-making and goal-making?
Great. Okay. So, we're gonna do this a little bit differently than we've done before. We're still gonna do groupings, but since there's so much here, normally I just sort of set you loose on it and say, just put stuff in there and put it in groups. And that doesn't always work, because we've got, you know, 57 people putting things in groups. What I would like you to do is, and part of having you read it out yourself and listening to each other, is sort of internalizing what you thought the themes were. So, what I would like you to do is just identify, let's, before we start putting things over in the groupings, what did you hear as a theme? Well, like, when I ask you that, what stuck out to you as something that you heard repeatedly?
Hey, Kristin, I think Taylor was having a hard time putting the notes in.
Oh, okay. I see Taylor adding stuff. Okay. Do you want a minute, Taylor?
Sorry, I was like locked out for a little bit, so I was like trying to figure out how to get back in.
You want a minute?
Oh, it's, it's, you can keep going. I'll just add things on the side if that's cool.
Okay, or we can take, we can take a minute. I know these, these folks have not had a break yet. Do you wanna? I don't know if you, if you want a break, or like, we can push through, or?
You can take a break.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you guys, sorry.
No, it's no problem.
We want you to participate. So, why don't we, take five minutes? Okay, so, let's come back at 7:56. School remediation back in session. Taylor's still working.
Okay. See. Let's zoom in on what Taylor's got. Let you finish that one. And then, Taylor, would you want to read us what you've got when you're done with that one?
Sure. All right. So, my questions are, are there any additional goals the school district should consider? How can we better foster relationships with the district and members of the community? What methods of communications have worked in the past? And are there any updates slash revisions you feel are needed to the current district goals?
Thank you. So, what I would like you to do is identify for me what you are, what are you doing, Vince? Are you helping, are you helping me facilitate?
You said you wanted groupings, right?
I do, I do. I want groupings. So, what I would like you to do is identify, you know, what you're hearing as themes. So, let, as an example, one of the things that I heard you all say was, are these, you know, are, are there other areas that, that we haven't said here? What, what other areas? I, I just heard Taylor mention that. Are there additional goals we should consider? Are there any updates or revisions? I heard a few of you say that. So, I would, just an example, like a theme of, you know, is this the right thing? Are there updates and revision could be like a, a theme, and we would, you know, move, well, we wouldn't have to move things over there. But what I would like you to do is identify the themes. We don't have to switch all the stickies. In fact, Vince, I actually really appreciate your help right now. You're being my scribe. I love it. It's fun to have, it's fun to have a core. So, um, so, are there, yeah, so that's one. So, you talk. Let me know what you think the themes are, because these are gonna sort of coalesce into the, to the questions that we're gonna talk about for how we reach out to the community.
Do we, can we word that one as other areas slash what's missing, something like that? Because that way, it's like really specific what we're talking about with other areas.
Yeah. And, and after we sort of identify like what the theme is, we will definitely put them in question form that makes, make, that are appropriate for a question. But yeah, other areas and what's missing. Thank you. What else did you hear?
Communication is a big one.
Communication? Anything specific about communication? What came up for you?
A lot of it is sort of, do you feel able to connect with the board or communicate with the board?
Okay. To connect and communicate with the board. Great.
Where do you, like, where do we want to go? Futures? That came up a few times, in the form of one way or the other? Like that, kind of thinking about the futures?
I spell when people are watching me.
There was sort of a, in sort of two sides of the same, so two sides of a question. One is sort of, what are the, to the, to the areas of strike question is, what are the concerns or the deficiencies? So, it's not, not just, but what's, what's missing, but what's not, not working or not serving our, our students or our schools?
It's working. It's not working.
Right? Um, I keep answering just moving on.
There's a, I think there's a theme around the role of the board. And education around the role, and I don't know if it may fit under that. Do you feel able to connect and communicate with the board or it may stand alone? And I think we'll probably know as we work through this.
Charlie, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, another theme that I kind of noticed was the student experience, because there's a lot of questions about how your student feels about school, how we can like improve it. And so I don't know if that's too general, but I feel like that would be a pretty big theme.
Definitely a theme. Thank you. Anything else?
Um, representation. We've got questions about. Who do you feel, what do you feel the goal, the goal do represent? And what do you feel the goals don't represent? Or who do you want the goals?
I guess generally a category of, oh, those futures right there. Never mind, it's already on there.
Can you say that again, please?
Yeah, I said, never mind, I didn't read all the post-it notes. And I was going to say something that's already there, so never mind.
Great.
I think though, um, one thing that is kind of overlap, but maybe not called out quite as much as like the community engagement piece, right? Because they. How we feel or how people feel about being able to connect and communicate might be different than actually engaging with processes. And like community and student engagement, I feel like showed up in several of the post-its too. Or at least.
So as distinct from communication, actual engagement and participation.
Yeah, because it's like, even with the decision making, that's that last one on that I'm scrolling through them. Again, is it feel like a little bit different than just communicating with the board and connecting?
Yeah. Great. Any other big themes? Think. In your caring, disinterested facilitator role, a lot of you really, I mean, some of you had very standout answers, but a lot of you were really, really in tune with each other, saying very similar things. It doesn't surprise me that there aren't 20 different themes, because you were very much coming from the same places for the most part.
I'm wondering about. So Melissa had one that I think is sort of there, but. Has the district shown you that your perspective has been represented in decision making? And I wonder if I'm representation. But I wondered about representation in the decision making part is not necessarily included there. I'd like to know more about that. So I wonder if we just say, who do these goals represent and do they not? I wonder if we say representation in decision making? And then we, then we follow up with that question? Is that?
That does, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
I really like that one.
Thank you. One of the things I want to ask you as we're still percolating on that, I'm going to move this over here. So you looked at what the goals were for engaging the community? And I'm just going to draw everybody to me for a second. These are the, these were the objectives that you said you wanted to achieve, engaging the community in in this effort. Accountability, multiple perspectives, you wanted to increase trust, transparency, empowerment of the community, shared governance and responsiveness. And so my question is, obviously, these are going to get fleshed out. Do you feel like, take a minute, do you feel like these categories here, at least these areas of questioning, get to what you wanted to do? What your goals were in engaging the community?
Wait, are we supposed to talk yet, Kristin?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, like, wait, did I jump in?
No, please.
I think so, because it's helping us think about where we're at and where we're going and like really trying to involve community in that and see how we can better communicate and work with folk. So I think so, from my perspective.
I was going to say the same. I think a lot of the, looking at these questions and how we ultimately ask them, get responses to those questions can help us do the things that are on that blue sticky note that you have there in terms of being accountable by taking into account multiple perspectives, building trust or continuing to enhance trust with the community, transparency, empowerment, shared governance, responsiveness. And so I think it starts with asking the questions, but really and truly living into those values comes from how we respond to what we learn.
I think, you know, after this, and we'll, we want to take one step at a time, obviously, but the sort of next area of thinking, once we, I don't want to jump too far ahead, but once we have this information, then the next question is, okay, so what, what do you do with it? Right, what does that mean? So that's why I just sort of wanted to bring up that, you know, obviously want to align what you're going to do with what you said you wanted. Because that next part is going to be, now what are you going to, now what are you going to do with it? But again, one step at a time, let's make sure we know what we're asking. So if there are, we also want to be mindful of how many, and we'll talk about what's the format that we're going to go out to the community with. If like, if we were doing a survey, like Survey Monkey kind of thing, you want to be mindful of survey fatigue and folks not wanting to, you know, fill out a 20-question survey or by the end, you're not getting good data. I would also recommend, you know, having a lot of, you know, Likert scale quantitative stuff, but then also leaving room for some qualitative, like, you know, what's going well, what's not going well? Places for people to be, to do more narrative in the end, so that they can, you know, respond in a way that you can't on a Likert scale. So anyway, again, little bit jumping ahead, but in your mind, are these sufficient then? Is this enough? Does this, if this covers what you wanted to do, do these categories, which that now we'll work on, how do you make them into questions? Do these categories cover what the essential pieces that you want to get out of your community?
I feel like, I feel like they do without making this too big and too broad, and as you said, making the task of entry survey too boners for anybody to take on.
Their thoughts? I feel like I'd know it if there was wild disagreement from this group.
I'm wondering how the second row, what is working, what is not working, or serving our students in schools? How is that this, what's different about that between areas of strength and areas for growth?
We could merge those.
Yeah. In fact, that might be, that, those sound like narrative to me, right? Because how do you put that on a one, two, three, four, five scale? Like, that's what I would recommend for the, for the end, you know, what's working, what are our areas of strength? What is not working in your mind? What are some areas of growth?
So can we strike, are we proposing striking those area of growth and area of strength? I mean, I'm comfortable with that. Or you combine them?
I'm just combining. So let's look at, let's look at some of the pieces here that, let's look at how we want to ask these, these questions. So the other areas, what's missing piece? I know that some of you actually, you know, put questions in there that articulated that. How would you want to articulate? And for those of you that either saw what somebody said or put the question in yourself, what's a good way to articulate, to ask for, you know, what do you think something is, is missing? This might be, depending on how we ask this, this might be another narrative question too. And because it's fairly easy, you know, I mean, it's not too hard to, you know, to code qualitative data and pull out themes and, you know, that, that can be done. I think I'm helping you with this, right? Am I, am I doing this with you? Because if I am, like, I, that is what I do. So I mean, that we may want to think of that in terms of, you just, you can't do that on a priority scale unless you're giving somebody really limited choices, which I don't think is what your goal is here with this question. So I wonder, my suggestion is, do we think about this in terms of this is a narrative question? How do you ask this in a way that can get a fairly concise answer? But that, that also makes folks feel like they can answer honestly, but it's a targeted question.
So it is 8:15. It's actually past time, but for the student representatives. For their commitment for being at the meeting tonight. So if you all would like to sign off and, you know, go to bed or do your homework or whatever comes next, feel free to do that. But also, if you want to stay, feel free to stay and participate also.
Thank you guys so much. I think I'm going to head out. Good work, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your evening, everyone.
Be careful.
Good night.
Thank you.
I'm so glad you have students that participate in your meetings. That's wonderful. Thank you for being a model to other boards in that way, in many ways. Okay, so how might we ask, if you, if you agree, tell me, obviously, if you don't. If you agree that a question about, what do you think is missing? Are there other areas that you would like to see the board focus on? Is the question as simple as that? What would you, how would you word that? Because what I, what I would like to do is leave with a pretty good idea of what we're going out to the community with, because then we're going to talk about timeline.
I think with this one, what I, what stands out to me is this is a question about the current board goals. As I, as I've listened, so I'm wondering if it needs to say something about other areas, what's missing in our board goals? Or again, somehow, because some of them are more general about education overall in the school district and how people feel about it, and some are more specific and honed in. And this one feels more honed in on the, on the board goals themselves.
And if we're asking about the board goals to, either than breaking it down one by one or having a list of here are the board goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It requires a lot more of folks in terms of engaging in a survey, listening sessions or other formats. Just thinking about how we would, how we would provide that. And then something else that I think about, just in terms of the language, when I think about what's missing, to me, where my mind goes is sort of, okay, well, what have we been doing in the past and where are the gaps? I think there's also a question to be asked in terms of what comes next? You know, where are we now and where are we headed? I know that comes down in the futures where you're pointing out, Kristin, but I just wanted to point that out. When I, when I mentally think about what's missing, it takes me to look backward at what's been missing rather than looking forward. And so I just wonder, so that if others do that as well, or if that could be helpful to think about in that way.
I think it's fine.
I think a little, oh, sorry, sorry, Vince, go ahead.
No, you go.
I was going to say, I think so, but I also, I was actually having this conversation with one of my kids about like how, when you do work towards something, especially like any kind of change work or things that are shifting things or moving things forward. Once something is starting to be met, it often like reveals more work to be done. And sometimes that does take reflection to see like, okay, when we're thinking about what's been accomplished, what, what was missing in that process or what was revealed? And so I think some, it does take a little bit of both looking back and forward. And so I think it's kind of a little bit of both. But I totally agree with you. It does help, it does make you think back when you think of what's missing. And maybe we just have different questions, one that's like reflective and one that's forward-facing facing, sorry, words.
I think that's where I was, Lou, in terms of like not taking out the missing question, but looking at, does it also capture the forward thinking? And could we add something there too? Thanks.
I was going to advocate for the same thing. And for the, for the reason that when you're going to see differences between the responses and similarities, and that's useful information.
I really like the idea of sort of, you know, maybe having those, those questions right next to each other in that, you know, looking back. I mean, people really like to envision, right? I mean, that's a very positive thing to do. Looking back can also be very positive because you grow on, on looking back. But it is easy, it is a little easier to be critical in looking back. And if you stop there, there's sort of a lens that you, that you can wear in, you know, for the rest of it. But when you say, you know, like, I think, I think it was Ryan that said in, in questions, you know, like, what does this look like five years from now, 10 years from now? There's a lot of hope in those kinds of questions. And so I think it would be really great as we think about, you know, constructing this, what does it look like? Asking, yes, are there areas that you feel could be added? Which still are future questions, but it is asking folks to analyze what's missing and then help us, help us do visioning. What does this look like five, 10 years from now? And that's a very positive question to ask, not like we're trying to get rid of people's, you know, critical feelings. But I think it also encourages that dreaming aspect too. Sammy?
Yeah, I'm reflecting off some of the conversations, that's how I was observing for both the county and Creval's 2040. Ryan has been involved in those. And one of the powerful things there is really asking or prompting the community to tell a story, to draw something. And reminds me actually in middle school or elementary school, they were like, how does 2020 looks like? And, and I remember like flying cars and other stuff. I think we need to allow kids to really tell us the story of the school district that should be. If money was not a limitation, if, if time is not a limitation. And maybe that will drive us to prioritize the things that they think are important in their visioning. So I totally agree with that. And I'm not the expert in this, but I think there might be a sequence in how we ask those questions that might be helpful, whether we start with the vision and the future and then we go into. Whether we start with the vision in the future and then we go into why are we missing or the other way around? I'm curious which way is better to get people to help us with the guidance with both visioning and critical thinking around what's what's missing.
Thoughts on? Well, let's, I don't want to say something like, let's put a pin in that. That's terrible. Let's hold on to that because I really want to address that. Let's get through, that's really important. Let's try and flesh out what these questions might look like and then talk about. You know, how do we sequence this? What feels natural and what feels hopeful? If that works for you. Is that okay? Okay. So for the futures question, there's been some discussion on, I mean, again, ideas just thrown out. If if money and time are no object, what would the Corvallis School District look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now? What do you? What do you think? What do you want to ask? Sammy?
What would, what would the kids of the future or the children of the future learn in a in in school in 10 years or 20 years? Or what would they get out of school? Because, yeah, I'm not sure how to phrase it, but I would like to capture what would they learn, but also what would they get out of it, since the school is providing holistic growth experience for the kids?
Would be, how do they learn? What does the learning experience look like?
I'm very student affairsy on this one. It's about like the experience, the engagement and the sense of belonging. Yes, that sounds very OSU-y, I know, but that's kind of what feels like what you are saying, like in the future, what will students experience with Corvallis School District? Being in what they learn and or their experiences with the schools and what they learn and if they feel connected or something along those lines. So it's not exactly OSU language, just saying. Is that something like along what you're trying to say, Sammy? Like thinking about those multiple pieces and yeah, okay.
Yes. And I would argue Vince and the what's and the how and all these damages that Lou mentioned are possibly separate questions that might get people to say different things. Right?
When we did the work with the Thriving Communities Initiative, that's why we settled on those three, those three questions. It's like, what do you care about? What matters? And then, you know, doing that visioning, what does it look like? And then how are you going to get there? It's that, it's very simple. It's easy for people to engage with that.
I feel like this is, I think we just answered the student experience question or developed a student experience question more than we established a futures question. Because right below it is student experience, and I think this is a question that gets the student experience.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing that that we are, that question is very much about what what we want or what we are hoping or what we anticipate students will will experience. It's almost not really even significant that we're talking about in the future because the focus is less on the transformation of how we get to that future and more about what we're what we're saying about the 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 crux of that question being literally student experience. I think we, I think we could take a different run at a future oriented question if we want that.
So we could just take out the in the future and just say, what should students experience if this is the student experience question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I I would think that if we're talking about what students should experience, we aren't, we would hope that that is not something, if it is a good thing, we would hope that it is not in the future. We would hope that it would come to pass now.
So I have a just a related thought. This was not reflected in our questions. But in looking at this question, just thinking a missing box for us is staff experience. And especially just recognizing some of the challenges that the workforce has, that we might want to think about a parallel question around what should staff experience in CSD with respect to the type of support? Maybe another or something else there just around working environments and support or relationships.
And I think that's an important thing, not only for our staff to tell us, but I think as our community thinks about what school has been like the last couple of years. If nothing else, it gets them thinking about the people who are in our buildings, teaching children and what we would hope their jobs are like. So I think that's a good one.
I was just gonna say something similar, Sarah, based off what Shauna said, like it, it helps you think of like, oh, it's more than it's a a fuller people's experiences. And also I like taking out the future part two a little bit with that because of because I think we can think of futures very differently. So if some people might be thinking like in 10 years or 50 years and somebody might be thinking next school year. And so it's so contextual like time is, even though it's like measured in all these different ways, but like how we interpret what future means could completely change that answer.
Right.
But I do think we need a future, some sort of future facing kind of. But not that one.
So Lou, do you think in framing something future oriented that we need to draw some parameters around? Like, do we need to offer something to help operationalize future or?
I think so, just because of like when you said that, I was thinking that because when folk were like, well, we want students to fill it now or like, you know what I mean? But the future, like I said, it could mean something different depending on how you read the question. And if we're thinking board goals, if these are starting like next year, people might read that as next, this would begin next year instead of like at the end of this goal set time period or farther out or anything like that. So I think would be helpful and less question marks in people's minds about what we mean by that.
I I totally agree because I I absolutely agree that when you say feature to people, it means something different person by person. And so I think giving a focus to that will give us more can not maybe not consistency in the answers we get, but consistency on how those answers are focused.
And that's like there's cultural context with time too. And we have like a lot of different communities represented in the district too.
I have a thought just back to the student experience question as well. In looking at it and thinking about student experience and some of what's under the current board goals, some of it's related to health and safety. Some of it's related to social, emotional and mental health and well being. And I'm wondering if that's represented here in this question? Or if maybe there's a stem with a couple of different follow ups like what should student experience in CSD with respect to what and how they with respect to what and how they learn, with respect to their social and emotional well being, with respect to access to extracurricular experiences? Or, you know, thinking about are there other other things that we would want to call out there? Maybe even asking our student representatives what feels most important to them that should be called out?
Yes, I think the way I agree, Shauna, the way that question's worded, we're gonna get math reading.
So what and how they learn, social, emotional, I mean, because we can certainly do a like, you know, here's the main question, colon, and then like, here's the subheading, here's the subheading. So if we do with respect to what and how they learn, social, emotional, well being, what were the other things you said, Shawna? It was like coming into my head and then disappearing.
Just extracurricular opportunities. I'm sure there are others, you know, we could look, take a look back at the board goals as well as others that we've been thinking about. And Kristen, I'm just assuming it's okay to put more down, knowing that things would would trim eventually, or we could come back around to that.
Yes.
I think that's what I was trying to get at too, Shauna, is that like when I was like half joking about like thinking about the OSU framework, because literally part of what I do is in the department or student engagement and experience, right? And so there's those things that are looked for with like even shaping what's going to happen and like assessments and all the other things where it has to do with like sense of belonging. And I know like, that's like the very OSU-y kind of thing, but I think that has to do with that social, emotional, well being part too, is really if somebody feels like they belong in the district, in the schools. And so I really think that it does belong in there. The belonging belongs in the question. But yeah.
Social and emotional can be a little bit jargony just to feeling a sense of belonging.
And it, I think that's reflected like in ODE stuff too, and like a lot of policy stuff, etc., that belonging piece.
I think I like that language and I, I think it's very it's it's supported in literature around good student outcomes as well, right? So like that capacity to have a group or a level of feeling of acceptance that you can find yourself in the greater group. Like those are like, we have this reinforced study after study that we get the best student outcomes from K all the way through higher education. And so, yeah, it's maybe, you know, kind of a little bit of a that the term sense of belonging is maybe a little bit researchy or loaded in the like the way that we apply it. But that concept is hugely important. If we want our kids to be successful, we, they, they have to feel safe. They have to feel welcome. They have to feel ideally like they are more than just welcome, but that they have a place in those spaces. And so I I think it's a really important idea. And so I think we should use it, even if it does feel a little bit. How did you describe it? OSU-y? I think we should take it anyway.
That's just from the context, but it is like totally any kind of student development theory stuff that's going to be in there, no matter what the age group is, right?
Yep.
And I think our youth truth data shows us a sort of critical thing.
Yes.
We might also add, I know, so I, Sammy didn't mean to jump you. Having their individual needs met. Be another, I don't think that's quite reflected yet.
Okay. I have a meta question. Are we trying to capture what youth through survey is capturing? Are we trying to redefine? What are we not capturing that we need to capture, which might be youth truth or might be somewhere else? In other words, we're talking about student theory of student outcomes. And yes, the student should graduate, finish their credit, but also need to feel a feeling of belonging and sense of security and their needs being met. And I'm just trying to really figure out what is it? Is it maybe we need to actually dig deep into the youth through a survey to inform our goals? Or are we trying to ask ourselves a meta question? Are the things that we're measuring through youth truth and graduation requirements, et cetera? Are appropriate or should we expand those or change those?
I mean, I think asking like community, that question's really important because there's going to be things that probably come back that are not going to show up in any kind of like of our data collection stuff, right? Like, there might be critical key supports that are missing, especially from like underserved populations that we don't even have captured very well in those data sets. And so I think that this question of like the perception of like what the community feels that we need to be doing to help inform our goals, for me, it would be helpful to know that. Because we can, we can theorize it and stuff like that and use our the data sets we do have based on the students who fill it out, which of course we're not 100% either. And of course, this, the survey is not going to be 100% either, but yeah, it can help us help inform. That's just my thoughts. I drank way too much coffee tonight.
And I sort of feel like it's a good question to ask the community because if we, especially if we're asking the community at large these questions and we come back with like we should, you know, feel supported and feel like they are you know, they're seen in their schools and you all the things we are sort of hoping if we hear from that, the community at large. And then when we're talking about equity and investments and we get questions about why are you investing in these things? We can say, well, this is something that we've been told by the community that is a value and something we want for our students in our schools. And so in order to make that opportunity and make that support available to all of our students, we are making this investment for you, a group, these groups of students who historically have not been able to feel you supported and seen and belong like they belong and all the other things that the community is telling us are important.
And the discussion that we haven't had is what demographic information are we going to get from respondents to allow us to slice this data?
Hang on, we'll get there.
I know that I, I was just saying that that that's what we're touching on, you know, and Sammy's question is youth truth only captures one constituency in the district, which is children.
So let's, let's look at, let's shift just a little bit, not that we can't come back to anything, but just to keep us moving a little bit. Let's look at the role of the board question because I'm I'm not entirely sure, like, what do we want to get at in that question?
I'll offer that I think the community engagement, the including and participating component really connects to that role of the board section that how and one of our, one of the things that we wanted to get out of this was shared governance and empowerment. And so if there's one thing that's in our matrix here that I'm not seeing is this empowerment piece. I mean, maybe in that center question, we're struggling to get at it. But I think that we need something around empowerment and how are we bringing the community into our decision making processes?
So does that connect, Vince, in your mind with the lower right hand corner, that representation and decision making piece?
Yeah, I think that those things and that engagement and what I, and I mean, when I say engagement, I I mean that in the technical sense that that's a reciprocal relationship of mutual learning that we're learning from the community and community is learning from us.
So does the role of the board then, is that a separate question or does that fit into those two pieces? I mean, does it need to be a separate question or does it need to fit into? You know, as the board makes decisions, you know, who who are we invite? Like, do you feel like you're being invited to participate? Do you feel like you're being engaged? I mean, I'm not saying the right words, but like, you know, when in the context of board decision making, are you being engaged? Are you, do you feel like you have an avenue for participation or do we need a separate question for role of the board?
So, so I primarily pulled that from the question that Lou asked, which was, how can we help communicate the role of the board better? So I want to make sure that Lou's question. So I want to hear from Lou to make sure that that's included, however we develop it. I just saw that as an additional thing that we, for inclusion. And I think that's also been something that I've seen some of our board members do with community and presentation and action. And so I I just want to make sure that that's included and incorporated.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I think it's the way that I added that question is literally how I intended in the contribution to the ideas because there's a lot of people that don't know what we do or what our role is and a lot of times don't know the right avenues to even engage with us. And so like even knowing what our role is and everything like that, I think is really important to help make that more clear for the community. And I don't know, other than just having it on our webpage that requires somebody to go look it up and try to find it and stuff like that. And so those community engagement kind of opportunities, I think are really important. Like when we do with NAACP and we did a very similar Like when we do with NAACP and we did a very similar thing with SAFE, that way they knew what we did and what they can ask us to. Cause I think sometimes we get put in situations where folk are asking us about things that we um, can't really get into.
I think we have, sorry, Lou.
I was gonna say especially like specific examples of things that are going on that could turn into complaints and so. So anyways, I think, I don't know if that necessarily goes in here as far as like informing our goals, but it fits in with like, how do we communicate this better with the community? So it's a little bit more clear.
I, I think it does fit in with the goals to the extent that as a board, we are, you know, we're working hopefully in, not in a vacuum and in, in uh, collaboration with our community, with our staff to form these goals. Um, the goals are reflective of the, where the board's reach actually is. And so uh, I think that when we, when there's this disconnect around the function, the form of the board, um, it, I would think without that, without some better grounding in that, the goals might feel a little. I, I'm not even sure how to describe how they would feel. It'd be really hard to contextualize and have them feel meaningful if the perception of the board is one that i- isn't, isn't accurate to what the, the actual, the board. So I, I think one of the biggest challenges that we have in communicating and in having the, the community in general feel like the board is accessible is that what we do is not well understood. And what boards do is sometimes not well understood even by boards. And so that makes it further confusing when you have boards that are operating outside of what a board is designed to do. And you have those as points of comparison. Well, over here they're doing X, Y, or Z. And so this, to me, I think this is really a huge piece of, of helping bridge the, what feels like this, this gap between what we are, the work we are doing and the way that we are, the way that that is understood within the community. We, if we could bring those together a little bit more, I think we would find we'd have improved communication. We'd also have, I could think of quality in our communication that would be more constructive in moving us forward because it would actually I don't even, I, I'm gonna stop because now I'm just saying extra words. I think, I think it's important to have the role clarified.
I must feel like we have an opportunity to do a little education just in how we ask this question. Um, I can't tell you off the top of my head how I think that should happen, but um, if somebody's going through the survey and in answering the questions, they actually learn something about what the role of the board is, I think we've, that's a bonus for this whole process.
So it's like a bike would help you affirming it.
Yeah.
You know, you see the school board, the, the board's um, the responsibility of the school board is X, Y, Z. Um, the Corvallis School Board fulfills that obligation by one to five kind of thing.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking is that there, and we always do this, there's some preamble to the, to the survey that explains here's what we're asking you to do, here's why we're asking it, the role of the board is to do this. This is why we're reaching out for you. Here's our hope from you, you know, to articulate some of these things that you have said you wanted out of this. And then I think a really, so, so that there is that educational opportunity to open it up to, oh, this is what they're doing and why. But then maybe this question could be as distinct from the other ones, which, which get to more like how do you feel you're able to communicate and connect? Do you feel like you're being represented in our decision-making process? Maybe this question is, is simply, you know, how well do you feel like you understand the role of the board? I mean, maybe that's, those aren't the right words, but um, or in a more narrative sense, like what could the board, how could the board help you better understand its function and role? Or, or some, something like that, but like something fairly simple that gets at, you know, do you know what we do? Because I'm sure you've heard me say this before. I've been working with you for a long time. Nobody knows what a school board does and neither did you before you got on the board. Those of you that have known me for a while have said it a lot. Um, because nobody does, right? I mean, you know that. And, and, and as I think it was, was it Teresa or was it Sarah that was saying that um, you see all these exemplars all around the state of, of boards doing things very differently and um learn by example. Um. So, so do you want to have this question be relatively simple but straightforward and try and get some? How can we help you understand or, or how well do you feel like you understand? Kind of have a preference there. What do you think?
Well, I definitely like the how do you understand this as opposed to how can we help you understand it? Because I think that how can we help you understand it? One presumes we actually know the answer to the question, which the longer I'm on the board, the more, the less clear it feels to me. The parameter is still clear, but like the, you know, it's, I don't think it's something where this is like a teaching moment where we're going to instruct people on how to do this. It's, we, there's a, there's an opportunity for us to learn from the community, how they understand the function of a school board and how that lines up with what we understand to be the function of a school board. And then all of that in the context of what public meeting law says about the school board. And so um, I, I definitely think that a, a question that is giving them an opportunity to express what, what is understood. Um. How that, how they experience that as opposed to how do we fix what you think you understand um? Would be I better received and I'm more, give us more meaningful information.
Mm-hmm. Other thoughts on that? How did I word that to your?
Well, I wonder, just to some of your point, Theresa, and then kind of building off the words that you helped provide here. If the question does provide a, the school board serves the role of X, Y, and Z, how well do you feel this community understands the role of the school board? How do you think we could better communicate to the community what the school board does?
Yeah.
What about that framing?
I like that. I think that question captures some responsibility.
Right.
On us, that like part of the community understanding what we do is our responsibility to effectively message it. And maybe we haven't. To Kristen's point, that we didn't know what a school board did before we got on it either. And so, and not everybody in town is going to be able to serve on a school board to learn that.
I think that's, that's really what I was trying to get at was like, what can we do better to help folk understand? You know what I mean? And so I think that um, that's really getting to the heart of like why I presented that in the first place is like, so we know what to do because we only have so many ideas to. And if they're not effective or they're not reaching people. Cause I know it's not just one single way either. There has to be more than one way to get the, this information out. So anyways, okay.
Well, I'll take a back a few years and watch the school word appreciation video. Remember, I'll have to find that and share it with you because it's making me thinking about that as we said.
Kristen, I was gonna say in the first question there. I know how others feel about it, but changing instead of how well do you, but how well do you feel the community understands the role and function?
Okay.
How do folks feel about that in terms of switching you to the community?
I like that too, because if they're looking at it and they just read what we do, they're like, what do you know?
It's a good point. Okay, thank you. All right, what's this future question gonna be? What do you want to put as parameters? Or what do you want them to envision?
I think we shouldn't make the parameters too far out because if you go too far, we're outside the life of this board pretty fast. Um, so.
It should be go fifty.
Yeah. I'm not sticking around for fifty years. Um, so I think like thinking about what's realistic for, we want information that this board can impact. Whereas it's harder to think about that fifty years from now.
If it's tied to the board goal length, like by the end of this board goal set or something like that. Does that feel a little bit closer, Sarah, or is that too close?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think I think that could work as a, I, I the board goals, my understanding is we're going to work on those at the um retreat this summer. So there may be changes, the changes to these board goals, you know, within a few months. So that might be too short.
No, I mean, like the, the ones that we're establishing, because these ones are
Okay.
Point like this next goal set, because it's for
Five years or three year. I can't remember how one week.
I, I do like the way Vince framed it. Where does education in Corvallis need to be? And then we could change the number of years, but I like, I like his framing because it's broad enough that will get lots of ideas. And I think I also like the fact that it's embedded because that's what was used by Benton County. Is, is that right Vince? The language is the same that Sean used?
Yes, it is.
So I like the fact that it's something that we know has um, has worked in the past in a, in a similar process.
The one, one
Again, Vince, can you give me your wording? Just so I can start that.
It is where does education in Corvallis need to be in? I said fifty years, but maybe twenty years is the, is the better timeframe for the school district. And while you're capturing that, I mean, to Sarah's point, um, it should be tangible, but I think that we can set them up to, to think aspirationally on a long time horizon and then follow up with, okay, but what does the district need to do over the next five years to achieve that vision?
So how does ten years sound? Just throwing it out there. I wonder about, you know, the, the sort of extra short. I mean, what sounds like a very short time period? I wonder too about, I mean, ten years seems like, oh, I can think of things differently in ten years, whereas like three to five years, I'm like, eh, what's gonna, you know? Can I think of things, you know, any different? I can think of my kid being older, but do I really think of much being different? Um, so, so I wonder, just again tossing it out there, if ten years might get folks to like really envision something. And then to Vince's point, this board gets to start setting that up. And of course, all of you will still be on the board in ten years.
Well, and I wonder too for people who have ten years, their kids in the district who are going to be here in ten years. Um, and so there's sort of two sides of that tenure. One is that like, when we think about it that way, ten years isn't very long. But when you also think about it, like if you're a parent who's got a first grader and you're thinking about where I want, where I want my kid's education to look like when they are graduating from high school. It sort of gives, like as you're thinking about that aspiration, um, they've kind of got skin in the game.
Mm-hmm.
About twenty years. I mean, think about it, a kid in school now in twenty years is gonna have kids of their own. That'll be, you know, coming into the school district.
I, I Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Teresa.
Okay, uh, I feel like ten years is um, it's far enough out for people to be able to see the potential for something to be different, but not so far out for apathy to set in about why, about it not mattering to them. Um, I feel like when I think about things that I need to spend my time on right now versus what I'm, what is gonna probably occupy my time twenty years from now, they're very different. Ten years from now, I will barely be free of the Corvallis School District with my child, right? So like the better part of those ten years, what this Corvallis School District is up to is still gonna matter significantly in my daily life. Maybe not so much twenty years from now. And so that feels a little maybe too far out there. Um. I don't know. That's, I, I don't have an answer. It's just a thought.
I was just gonna add to that, when we get too far out, sometimes those answers being able to answer comes with a little bit of privilege too. Cause a lot of folk are thinking like, I would have to think of even how I'm gonna get through this year, like continue to survive the pandemic and thinking ahead that far is like, I couldn't imagine myself living in this town that long. Like, is this town gonna be able to support my family that far into the future? I have no idea because of how I experience it now. So I think there's a lot of things to think about when we think about the, the farther out. We might start excluding people's thoughts based on their lived experiences here. Um, in the context of like where we're at as a society and the pandemic and all the other things. And so I want us to be careful that we're able to pull people's thoughts in as best as possible to.
And this is one of those questions we could ask with multiple layers too. We could say five years and then ten years, you know, I mean, to, to see and, and see what the differential is there. I mean, if we wanted to, I, I mean, there, there's nothing stopping us from asking multiple layers of, you know, can you, what would you think in five years? What do you think about ten years and seeing if, if they are, if they perceive a difference? If that feels like it might be more inclusive? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree. Sorry, guys.
Oh, go ahead, Sammy. You haven't said anything for a while.
No, no, I, I agree, the multiple layers because uh, Corvallis by its nature, you have the fifth generation, you have the Native American community, you have um, uh, students who come in for uh, truly four or five years and uh, their kids come here for four or five years. Uh, and, and and yeah, I don't know how I can, if, if I had that situation where I'm here for a few years, uh, or my children are here for a few years, how I can, how I can uh, give them this idea that you are part of uh, the future and you can give those students who will come in here for three, four, or five years only in ten years or in twenty years or maybe next year, uh, a better future. So, so yeah, Lou, you touched on a very good point is that capturing the multiple identities of students and communities here uh, uh, who might have different lived experience and connection to, to Corvallis longitudinally is really important. And it might increase the sense of belonging by giving them that flexibility. Sorry.
I like the layered too because um, the other thing that might come up for folk is like, oh, you want me to wait like ten years before change happens here? You know what I mean? And like just based on that conversation we had yesterday, they want change like today. Like yesterday. And so there's like some students that do. And so I think that that's important to think about in like having some, we don't have to say like for next year or in two years or anything like that, but even something that's five years feels a little bit closer. And then having the longer, okay, for folk that may feel like they can be here longer or that um, know they will be, then they can be like, okay, we can do deeper change that farther out.
And I think that one of the good things about the student experience question is that it's, it's present. What should students be experiencing right now? So, so you also do get to the the present, you've got the future question and you've got the, the present question. Um, okay. Still going. What about the community engagement, including participation? What do you want to ask about that? Is this like, how, how well does the board encourage, how well does the board engage the community and encourage participation in its decision-making? Or where are we going with that?
I was sorry, I always start with a little bit of humility with that. I'd say probably we're not doing it very well. How can we do it better? Yeah. And if someone thinks that's we're doing great, they'll say, you're doing great. Uh, but really open it, open it up with, with that, we can do better. Definitely we can.
So maybe how can the board improve? Assuming improvement, sorry.
Go ahead, um, but we can also have a question, have the, you know. You know, very well, not so well, sort of scale, and ask people to give us a rating. And then you have to re-improve. Um, so that we have, you know, that question would give, give us some data on. You know, half the people who answered. Think we do a poor job communicating, or half of you, seventy percent think we do very well or well, or whatever it is. Um, and right now, all of our questions are going to be, you know, asking people to give us. Answers that are, you know, thoughts that they're writing down and, um. We do run in, you know, I. Start, stop paying attention after a certain number of those kind of questions when I answer a survey, so to have an opportunity to. Just have a reading.
Yeah. Yep. I'm gonna move this.
Thought that popped up for me is, is how do we personalize this? How can the board improve engaging with you? Or groups that you participate in or are a member of? Or what is the most important way the school board can engage you and groups you're involved with? And then we would be able to slice that by, by groups.
It's getting late, I can't think of English, hold on. All right.
Uh, spelling goes out the window at, at nine o'clock.
It's not spelling, it's just the actual, like, how do I construct a sentence? Okay. Um, okay, great. What, for this one, I would say we could also do this Leckert scale, right? We could get some, some. Quantitative data on this, not do you feel, but you know, to what extent do you feel able to connect and communicate with the board?
I really like that suggestion, Sarah, of like putting some sliding options or things to click. That makes sense, I just wanted to appreciate that.
I get frustrated surveys that make me think too hard, so.
Well, and we can, we can do that with this one, how well do you feel the community understands, right? There can be a sliding scale there too, and then some narrative underneath there. Um, okay, this last one that we don't have worded very well yet is the representation in decision making. But I wonder, is that, and it may not be, but is that captured here? How well does the board engage the community and promote participation in its decision making? But we've got the other layer here, which is. Who do these goals represent and who do they not, which is not captured up there, so I wonder. Do we remove the part about representation and decision making because it's covered somewhere else? And keep the, the last part? Okay. I'm seeing thumbs up.
Well, that can just go all over the question about. Do you think things and things missing? How do we do representing people?
Yep. Okay. Let's talk, and so. How does this look to you as far as, because I. What I want to make sure we do also is talk about timeline. Because we want to make sure that we meet your expectation, but I want to make sure first that these all look good to you as far as what you would expect to go out.
It might be nice to just also, I know this is bigger survey questions, maybe this comes later, just around, is there anything else you'd like the? Board and district leadership to know?
We could certainly add a sort of a. Big, general question at the end. Okay. I will just suggest I wouldn't add much more. Because as you pointed out, a lot of these are. Actual narrative questions. We don't want. We don't want people to get tired of answering them and then have lower quality responses at the end of the survey.
Well, I don't know. I'm not a survey expert, but, um, yeah, I sort of feel like as, as many places as we can. To have an opportunity to do something where they just have a scale they need to answer, and then if they feel like. Giving us narrative they can, because I think we'll have, you. I would assume that there'd be more people who will, if they go, if they want to do this quickly. They may be able to like go through and give us the scale on things, but then not give us the narrative. But it gives the people who have, so we'll get that data at least. And then we can get the, the deeper thoughts from the people who. Want to make a commitment to answer things that maybe some, you know, some of these areas are more important to some people than others, so we may get more thoughtful answers. Not get the same people giving thoughtful answers for each section, does that make sense?
I mean, one of the things we could do, just as an idea, is not make all the questions required. Right, so if you wanted to click through, sorry, Lou, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I like that better because if you do too many like skills and checkbox options, you're actually. Setting the, you're setting the parameters of the answers. And so the open ended questions. Help give their actual, like what they want to share. Without giving them the options of, you can easily construct the outcomes. With surveys like that, um, I don't know if that is making sense at this hour, but.
That totally makes sense, I just want to have, give it, set it up in a way that. People who have questions that they feel are important, they want to really contribute to. Are able to do that, but if the whole survey, we don't sort of wear them out so that we don't get the thoughtful answers.
When you make it, Kristen, could, or you're making the survey, right? Okay, I was making sure I was just not imagining. Where they can see all the answer, or all the questions, all the answers. That way it's not flipping through pages because that might help with that too. Sarah, that if they see them all ahead of time, so they know like how much time they want to invest on an answer, instead of like spending all this time. On question one, and they flip and they're like, oh my gosh, I'm have to, and they get shorter and shorter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's an excellent way to construct that, so they know how long it is, and then if the questions are not all required, you know, I'm going to answer these. For, I don't have time to do these, but I have really thoughts that I want to convey. Here, so yes, I think on one page would be a great idea. Sean.
I had two, two things, um, one, just in looking at questions that I know we don't want to add. But I see students represented, I see staff represented, general community represented, and I don't see any. Specific question calling out the family experience, so just wanted to. Put that on the table, if that's something that we also want, want to call out in some way. And then my other question was, I know this is a capacity issue. But are we looking? At the possibility at all of gaining this information in other ways, through listening sessions, focus groups? Conversations or other. You know, just in terms of thinking about, are we just centering? Written typed words in English, in English and Spanish versus looking at other ways to gain perspectives and really engage diverse groups? And I know that, that may be a bigger question around capacity and how we could go about doing that, but just wanted to put that on the table too.
I was thinking the same thing.
And that was sort of, you know, a question that I would have too, is A. You know, i- if this is Survey Monkey, how many languages do you want it translated into? What would you normally do? I would ask for your district's help with that. Um, but then do you want to do, like, what is the process? How big does this get? And, um. You know, how, how soon do you want this back? You know, how do we reduce barriers, obviously, to participation? And, you know, what, what is the process? What do you want to do? And that gets to the other question of like, all right, so what's the timeline, at least for the first step? So let's, yeah, let's have that. Let's have that technical conversation too.
And just to plant the seed too, we've had a number of PTAs and PTOs step up and say, we'd love to connect with other PTOs or PTAs, and. Some of whom are serving as liaisons for their families between things they're hearing from the board. This could be a great way to deepen our engagement with some of those groups that already naturally exist in our communities who are serving as. Leaders and conveners and connectors with parents and families, um, also thinking about leveraging like. Students at OSU or others who might be interested in helping with research projects related to. You know, engaging with the community, conducting focus groups, folks who have some training or maybe are even looking for opportunities to. Engage in their community, so there could be some ways to leverage, leverage resources.
I was gonna say, about the PTOs and PTAs, Shauna, because I think that's a good way to reach some. Parts of the school and then also like community orgs to help like. Can you share this in your newsletters too, that are going out if they're either in print or electronics or? If they're willing to and, um, able to, I'm thinking like CASA and. And double ACP specifically, um, but. There's other orgs too in the community that can be reached out to, or. Even just saying like, if you would like to share this, like if this is going out. I would imagine in a district email, if you would like to share this in your. Group or organization's newsletter, it's welcome, something like that, that encourages it to be shared out in other ways too.
Thing the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
Um, I was just gonna say, in terms of the timeline, we'd like to be able to bring this back to you, um, on the, at the May fifth. Board meeting. Um, for a couple reasons, one is that Kristen's available to come back on the fifth of May. Um, but also because we would then also that night have a chance to review this information and also. She would help us, um, start your evaluation, then she would come back on Dune Night to, um, to review your self eval. So. So I think you just have, what's going to be important is for you to decide. How many events you would like to participate in during this period of time. Um, with community and have in mind that it's between now and May fifth, so. And Kristen's going to need a little bit of time to, um, call the beta as well.
Oh, yeah, especially since this is like a lot of qualitative data. That, yes, I will need some time.
I know I've been talking a lot, so I'll step back, but is there also a possibility of this being? Let's say with that timeline and knowing that that's not a lot of time, of this being a first, kind of a pilot. Of these questions, seeing what data is coming back. And then using that as a launching off point for, for more in the coming year or more in the next year, rather than feeling like, okay, then we have to cram everything in right now versus. Let's use it to, to start to learn to see how this approach is working. And then maybe make some course corrections, but continue the process longer term.
Yeah, I, I think that's important because we also, with looking at who answers the survey. In that short timeline, I think will give us, you know, it may be clear that, oh, we have. Done the survey and we've missed, we know we've missed. People who we really want to hear from, and I, I would like to be able to make sure that. We. Have the, have an opportunity to. To do a continued outreach to get information if we know we're. Missing people, right?
Then I think based on that, what may be valuable, and again. We have a lot of researchers in this, in this meeting, um, but it makes me wonder if we would want to start with the Survey Monkey. And get some themes and then do some, um, smaller groups or focus groups. Based on the, um, the themes that we're starting to identify.
Well, and could, you know, assuming we apply for the OSBA scholarship. Training next year. Is it possible to continue our project from this year into next year?
Everything is possible in this quantum reality, yes, it's possible. You can continue, you can, I mean, that's one of the best things you can do with this, with this program, right? Is to, is to keep it iterative and sequential and not. We're going to do this and then this unrelated thing, you've always done of, you know, a, a related thing that scaffolds out. And, and I think that, you know, I don't say this to every board, I think you've made like the, like the highest and best use of what we do here with the MSP. And so I absolutely think that, yes, you could do that.
Um, I have a question that's more around the technical stuff and it goes back to something Shauna said about like. Families being represented. When I think of community, I think the families are included in that, and I wonder if we need to make it more clear, that way it's like explicit, like when we say community. We're talking about family experiences too. And to help like clarify that in case it's like, I don't see myself reflected, does that make sense?
So it would be.
Anytime we say community, should I say, including families or in families, families and community?
Or even at the beginning, like say, something, like, you know what I mean, like at the, the preamble part, like. When you see community, um, please note that, that means families as well, and that way. I think it's like, a lot, sometimes things get separated out when it's like, sort of like. Well, families and parents are part of the community.
Right, yes, yeah, and, and what, what is nice about the whole. Preamble piece is that you get to say a lot that you don't get to say in the questions, like we really, really. And, and whenever we do a survey, we're really intentional about like, okay. What are you not, like, what do we really want to make sure that you understand about what you're being asked, like, what is this for? What are we going to do with your information? And, you know, what's the point of, so I think. Lou, that's a great place to be, like, anytime we say community, we mean families also, we mean the broader Corvallis community, like you are included, every, everyone's included in this. And, and certainly families are a key. Part of, of our district, I mean, obviously I'm not wording it in the way that I would, but, um, but absolutely, yes, thank you, that's a great place to put that. Any other thoughts? So we've got a date that I'm going to come back to you with, so I will get going on this right away. Um, the other thing that I will need your support on, because we don't have translators at OSBA, so I wonder if there's. Like, how many languages do you typically translate into and could we have access, like if I can get this, what I typically do. Put it into a Word format, send it off to the district. They get it back to me in Word and then we plug it in to, and then I send you multiple links to different surveys, so. I don't know how quickly they work, we can get started on this right away. So that I can get it to you as fast as possible, but is it possible to get access to your translation services? Okay.
Yeah.
How many languages do you typically translate into?
We typically do English and Spanish.
Okay.
Do we have the option to do more than English and Spanish for this? What would that take?
It would just, it would take longer to get it, um, translated, but we could expand our language options, for sure.
Just the other piece to think about in that too, is then there would be the translation on the other side in terms of the responses for all the surveys as well. And I'm not saying that as a. Don't question, but just as a, you can do it.
Yeah, we have to build that into the timeline.
And, and I can always, you know, Ryan, you and I can work together offline to really sort of map out the like, okay, so. Translation takes this long and then I'll need this, like, we'll keep it open this long and then we'll need the, like, you and I can figure out the details if that works.
Yeah, the other thing I would want to do is we'd want to have paper copies. Um, at our schools as well, and then there would be some data entry we would need to do, but I'd still like to have that available.
Mm-hmm, yep, I've done that before where, where I just get them scanned to me or whatever, and then I plug it in. Yep, I've done that before where where I just get them scanned to me or whatever, and then I plug it in.
Does Survey Monkey have like the auto translate like some apps do?
Don't think it does. I think it's a little behind. Yeah, unfortunately. Okay. So Ryan and I can talk about technical details. How are you feeling about this? How does this, how does this feel? Great thinking, great work.
Yeah, I, I would say I feel really good about it. This was great work. As a, as a team, I feel really. Like this was productive, productive work time.
Very much so. Thank you all for your engagement. I'm gonna stop sharing this. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. We've got a plan. I know you've got more on your agenda. Um, so I will leave you to it. But I will, I will plan to see you in May and we'll get going on this. I'm sure you'll hear from me in the meantime, and Ryan, you and I will connect.
That's good.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Send you some times tomorrow.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. The next item on our agenda is consolidated action. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action? Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve consolidated action as presented.
Does anyone go here a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Sammy that we approve the items and consolidated action, and seconded by Therese. I will now entertain final discussion. There are no final discussion. Take a vote. Director Adams, how do you vote?
I.
Director Alavtra, how do you vote?
I.
Director, Co-Chair Tomine, how do you vote?
I.
Director Jones, how do you vote?
I.
Co-Chair Whitaker, how do you vote? And I wrote I. The solid action is approved unanimously. The next item is consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion only. Would anyone like to discuss any item in consolidated information? Okay, moving on, the, we have time for organ member comments. Any comments? Well, go ahead.
I'll be quick. I promise I'll be quick, y'all. I just wanted to um, thank the community for hanging in there with. The ongoing pandemic and just really reemphasize that um. Mutual respect for each other as we move into a new phase of. Um, how the schools would be operating with regard to all the many things that Ryan and Melissa presented on earlier. And to continue to give each other that patience and um, and compassion that we have been throughout the pandemic. And I know it's going to be scary for some folk and exciting for other folk, and there's going to be a mix of emotions. And that we just keep hanging in there for the rest of the school year.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, anyone else?
I know, I know I just said this, but again, I feel like that was great, a great work time. And sometimes in these situations with Zoom, it doesn't necessarily feel as productive. So thanks for sticking with it and really coming up with a product that I feel really good about, which is going to give us really important information. So again, thanks for, thanks for doing that tonight.
Um, so my comment, oh, Teresa.
I just wanted to circle back to the superintendent evaluation and take a moment to share with the community. What a great privilege it is to work with our superintendent and how fortunate we are to have had his leadership during this time. To lose point about, you know, this, we are seeing a transition point in the pandemic. We are, we are hopeful, but we still need leadership to carry us through the coming transitions and decisions that are made. And I just want to say, I appreciate that we have wonderful leadership. And so thank you Superintendent Noss and um, community members. If you have an opportunity to send a thank you and a little acknowledgement. He works really hard. Sometimes I'm not sure that he sleeps, so he works, he works really hard. But our schools have stayed open, and they have done that in large part because of his leadership. And we don't have a formal evaluation for assistant superintendent, but if we did. Then I would say we are fortunate for our assistant superintendent as well, because um, our assistant superintendent, Melissa Harder, works also very hard. If Ryan gets to sleep, it probably only is because she is right there as his, as his co-leader. So anyway, just really excellent work, and I feel very confident that we're going to finish the year strong. So thank you so much for what both of you do to keep our district moving.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa. That was really well said. Um, anyone else? Um, I just have a quick comment. So um, one of the things that we had in consolidated action tonight was. A bunch of contractor novels, and a lot of times I look through this list and I see all the names, and I kind of notice the names of the people I know. But when I was looking through this list this time, I found myself sort of stopping and reading the names. Of the people who have been in the trenches in our schools all year and last year. In the trenches on Zoom and just feeling deep appreciation for the work. That was represented by each of those names on each of those lists. Um, so I felt really happy to be. You know, those, those contract notes through today. And just really grateful for all the people that are represented in those lists, so thank you all. And with that, if there's nothing else, this meeting of the Corolla School Board is adjourned.